Good evening. Adequate notice has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on November 22, 2017, in the Star Ledger, the official newspaper of the township of Springfield for the year 2017... 2017?
2018.
Excuse me, 2018. And posted in the Annex Building on December 29, 2018. Please rise and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sam, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Monaco.
Here.
Mr. Hockstein.
Here.
Mr. Schnur.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Poltrak, absent. Ms. Cowan.
Here.
Mr. Lofer.
Here.
Vice Chair Roth.
Here.
And Chairman Fensacker, absent. For the record, Vice Chair Roth will be chairing tonight's meeting. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a... A motion to approve the July minutes first, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Is it July minutes or...
Yeah, the July minutes.
July minutes, I...
Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I need a motion for the August minutes. Who was here in August?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Everybody in favor? You're... So we're good with the minutes?
Great.
Okay, we have one resolution to approve from last month. It's application 2018-9 Lutheran Senior Healthcare Inc. to 639 Mountain Avenue, Block 2901, Lot 75, preliminary and final site plan use variance with bulk variance senior living center. And I have a motion to approve from somebody who's here.
Motion to approve.
I don't think you're eligible, Mr. Monaco.
Oh, I wasn't here?
No.
Were you here last month?
August, no. July, yes. Is this July's?
No, it's August.
Well, this is...
It was from both.
It was from both.
Yeah, from both.
But we need somebody who was here for the...
Yeah, let me tell you who is eligible. Mr. Hockstein, Mr. Schnur, Mr. Cunningham, Mr. Poltrak, and Mr. Roth.
You were here last month?
We...
No. He wasn't here last month.
No, I don't know. That's what I have here.
You were here, but I can't... Can I... Can I second it?
You voted against it.
Yeah.
Oh, you voted against it. So I'm the only one.
You can move it with Monica.
So I'll motion and second, if I'm allowed to do it.
And you can vote for her, too.
Ms. Cowan, were you here at one or two meetings?
I was here for two meetings for that application, but if you're telling me they were on in August also, they came back in August, then I didn't hear that.
No, then you're eligible. You're definitely eligible. If you were here because there were only two...
They were here in two meetings. The August meeting...
June and July.
Yeah, the August meeting.
So you're good. You're eligible.
Great, I second.
Okay, wonderful. So...
I was here for both.
Were you both?
For June and July, I was here.
Oh, it was June and July, it wasn't last month?
It was August.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Right, that's why I read those names.
I apologize.
Yes, I was here June and July.
Okay, so who's making the motion?
Um, you want to make the motion, and I'll second.
Fantastic. I move.
You got it.
That's right, last month, we had... We didn't have any. We came in and we didn't have any.
Okay. Now, we'll do the roll call. Mr. Hockstein.
Yes.
Ms. Cowan.
Yes.
And Mr. Schnur.
No.
No, okay. And Mr. Roth.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so we have one application for tonight. It's application 2018-12 Panera Bread LLC, 295 Route 22 East, Block 4001, Lot 3, preliminary and final site plan use variance with a bulk variances added drive-through.
Good evening. My name is Paul Conchatori. I'm an attorney with Christ Mies Schuman in Darmenio representing the applicant Panera LLC. This represents and concerns the property where the existing bakery café is located in the shopping center on Route 22. The application proposes the construction of a drive-through to service that location. The application, in addition to the drive-through itself, also proposes the construction of a 384-square-foot building addition, essentially what amounts to a bump-out. That bump-out is important for the operation of the drive-through because Panera creates a fully redundant prep area exclusively dealing with drive-through orders. So, the existing prep area for the existing bakery café remains unchanged, and they create this independent redundant area to deal solely and exclusively with drive-through orders. The remaining... The existing bakery café will be unchanged in every way. In no way will it be changed, let me say it that way. It will remain the same seating, everything will stay as-is. The drive-through would operate exactly during the hours that the bakery café operates. So if it's open, the drive-through's open; if it's closed, the drive-through is closed. And those hours are not changing. What Panera has seen with the addition of a drive-through is that it actually increases the efficiency of the operation of the existing café and actually reduces the demand for parking spaces. The reason being, in the existing condition, if someone wants to get a food order from Panera but does not want to dine in, they need to find a parking space, walk into the location, make your order, wait for it to be prepped, go back, and leave. Those orders will now be handled by the drive-through as opposed to kind of needing to come in. So what that does is those people would be out of the queue to deal with parking. So, what Panera's seen, and you'll hear testimony of, the inclusion of the drive-through actually reduces the absolute volume of counter sales inside. And those sales are actually recaptured, of course, by the drive-through, and they hope there are more sales, so the overalls go up, but interior, it goes down. So, what you see is that the drive-through addition eliminates that conflict between people who want an order but want to take it out versus people dining in. It does reduce the parking demand because those people don't need parking spaces to enter. And, of course, it creates another convenient opportunity for customers who want to use the drive-through rather than having to deal with coming in. So that's kind of a quick overview of the testimony you will hear. The application does require de-variance because drive-throughs are prohibited. Subsumed in that, there is also a variance, a C-variance, for parking space count as well as signage, obviously the signage that's necessary for properly using the drive-through. So that's kind of a quick overview of what we're asking for. I have four witnesses. Bobby Cole is a representative of Panera, who'll kind of give you the overview. Dave Wasotsky is the site plan engineer from Bowler Engineering. Corey Chase from Atlantic Traffic, who will deal with describing his parking accumulation study and related issues. And then finally, John McDonough will give you the planning testimony in support of the use variance. So that's kind of a quick overview. Unless there's any questions or anything else, I can get started. Okay, thank you.
We'll just sit here and ask these questions.
Yeah, that's perfect. You can use that handheld microphone, too, then.
Yeah.
And I'll swear in, sir.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the board is the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Please spell your name for the record. Please give your name for the record, spelling your last name, and then give your address, please.
Sure. Robert Cole, and it's C-O-L-E. I live nine Lamb Lane, Manalup in New Jersey, 07726.
Great. Mr. Cole, can you briefly summarize your position at Panera and your familiarity with this location and what is proposed in this application?
Sure. I'm a area director for Panera, area manager. I'm pretty close to this project as I've been, you know, was the previous area director for this café just four months ago.
And you're familiar with what is proposed? It's operate daily operations both now and after the project?
Yes. Yeah, I actually approved the site plans proposed by our team.
Okay, terrific. And briefly, for the record, I gave some introduction, but why don't you just describe generally what is proposed? We'll have other witnesses, but why don't you just lay the groundwork for what's being proposed?
Sure. So we're incorporating a drive-through service at this location. Just a small bump-out. I think it's around 385 square feet or 84 square feet exclusively for drive-through. So it's a separate entity which has entered from the back of the... Our back of house. We're basically doing the construction for that and then the signage for the drive-through.
And so to confirm, the bump-out is used for the prep solely for the drive-through orders?
Correct.
Okay. As far as the remaining operations at the existing bakery café, they wouldn't be changing in any way?
Nope. So the inside of the bakery cafés, we call it the four walls, stays exactly the same. And the drive-through mirrors it. We have the same exact menu, choices, offers through the drive-through. We, you know, they open the same times as well. So it's not out of, you know, we're not open drive-through late. It operates at the same exact time.
So to confirm, then, so the hours would match the bakery café? So if the bakery café is open, the drive-through is open?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of how the drive-through operates, is there anything unique to it? I assume it's... There's two different boards? There's... How does it kind of work, generally?
Yep, so there's two different menu panels. There's a preview panel, which is in what we call the queue where the cars line up. I'm sure, you know, it's basically a preview of the menu. It has the same exact information on what's at the ordering menu screen as well. So, we typically have no more than an eight-car queue. I think this calls for an eight-car queue, but we usually have no less... No more than, you know, five to six cars in the queue at a time.
And we will get into that a little bit more, but just kind of taking a step back, just overall, as a concept of adding a drive-through, what do you see in terms of efficiency of operation? Or, you know, what happens when a drive-through is added to an existing location?
So we have a lot of to-go orders, rapid pickups, where customers have to come into the building. They have to find a parking spot, get out of their cars, walk into the building. We usually see somewhere, you know, the efficiency of the operation inside the building really increases because it's cars driving around our building and not coming in. It reduces the amount of foot traffic inside and really allows our business to thrive.
In terms of effect on the volume of sales on interior, what do you see? I mean, I assume Panera, you know, compiles and has that data. What do you see generally in terms of a drive-through as it relates to the volume of sales inside?
It's somewhere around 20%. Inside, we see a reduction in sales. It, you know, it's a... The additional sales are pulled from the drive-through, and that's really why we put drive... Added drive-throughs on.
We talked about the dedicated prep area, and obviously, that's, I assume, to get people's orders done quickly. You mentioned the queue. Again, to confirm, you said, you know, you see generally no more than eight? Is that... Was that what you said?
Correct.
Okay. In terms of wait time, so someone makes... Comes and finally makes their order, can you... Do you have information, you know, data that says, you know, roughly what... How does that work, essentially, in terms of timing?
So we average somewhere between three and a half minutes to five minutes. Speed of service is what we call it. For a drive-through, that's pretty standard, and that's about the average in New Jersey. That's where we're sitting.
Okay. In terms of signage, you mentioned a couple of different boards. Maybe you can just put a little bit more on it. You said preview board, menu board. If you can, a little more detail in terms of what you mean by that.
Yep. Pretty simply, we're just adding signs to make sure the location is identified as a drive-through.
Okay. And the preview board and menu board concepts, I assume, are part of... That's standard for Panera Drive-through, right?
Yep.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for this witness.
Anybody on the board have any questions for this witness?
I do. You said that the average queue is about eight people. Can you talk about during lunchtime and, you know, when... Is it always eight? Is it... Well, I can imagine that during certain times, there's more than eight people, and there's certain times there's less. So, you said there's an average of eight. Is there... You know, how does that work?
You know, the term average, I would say at most eight. With a three-minute and 30-second production time, we can pull cars through fairly quickly, and that allows us to deliver that guest experience during lunch. I would tell you with, you know, our drive-through sales are about 25%, 28% of our total sales. It's... If you look at a traditional drive-through model, it's closer to 70% or 80%, but for Panera, it's around 25% to 28%.
And if there's nine or 10 cars at certain times, do you have any kind of plan that would, you know, people could park somewhere or... What is the overflow contingency?
Certainly, he can, you know, kind of add. We do have our traffic engineer and site plan engineer and who will kind of deal with how that works from that perspective in terms of if there's kind of an unusual situation where there's more and how that would work. And so, those witnesses certainly would, and he can add anything if he'd like, and it would be sworn in, so he can, you know, chime in. But we do... That will be one of the things they'll be directly addressing, of course.
So, the word average, so how are you calculating that? You might have covered this, but, like, there's times the store's busy. Is it during the full day, or I just don't understand how you get to it?
And let me just be clear. I think, and this, I'm asking you to restate it, I think, if I heard your testimony right, it was that, you know, usually at most you would see eight, but the average is actually usually less than that in terms of what the numbers are.
Again, I guess the question is, what is the basis for an average of eight? How do you get to that number?
I think it's a less of an eight, right? I mean, why answer...
Coming back to Mr. Hockstein's point, is that during rush hour or is that...
Yeah, that's during peak.
Okay, during peak.
Yep. During lunch, you know, depending on the bakery café. I can tell you the Clark Bakery Café that during peak lunch, it's anywhere from five to no more than eight. We have a system that tracks that, that queue and how many cars go through per hour.
I would assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that in the way that Panera would design it, obviously, if it's too long or doesn't work, then it's... Then people just aren't going to come, I guess. So is that... I mean, I guess that's part of it, too?
Correct.
So that's a question I have. How do you get the time down so much lower than the time that you're inside the café waiting for your food?
We purposefully staff it that way. So it's... Because it's a bump-out, right? It's its own direct line. You know, we may see 35 cars in an hour. That's only 35 orders. Inside, we'll see 135, so...
So, yeah, the volume is just so much less.
With the dedicated line, lines and the dedicated associates just to drive-through, that's our... We have to be fast.
I had a question. How much does a drive-through eliminate your to-go orders? Because presumably, to-go, you'd still be parking as well.
Yeah, so we see somewhere between 25 and 20... Or, I'm sorry, 20% inside cannibalization to the inside business.
So you'd still see 80% of your to-go orders being to-go, or...
Do they come to the drive-through to pick up to-go orders, or they come inside?
So we have rapid pickup, which you can order prior to coming to the bakery café and then walk in and pick it up on a shelf. A lot of times, those will be picked up through the drive-through. And then, what we see is mostly the to-gos are now cars going around the drive-through.
But is the pickup business, it's not completely eliminated, is it?
No.
But are the pickups through the drive-through or sometimes, I guess?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll occasionally have somebody pick, you know, still pick up through the drive-through. We'll occasionally still have folks that come in to pick up.
So to be clear, because I just want to make sure I'm clear. To be clear, then, so the 20% number that you're talking about in terms of you referred to cannibalization, but reduction of the numbers, whether or not there might be some people who are doing the to-go or rapid pickup and are still coming in, your... The data for the many drive-throughs shows that the number in the absolute decrease is 20%. Whether that means some people are still coming in or not, that's the number that you're seeing in terms of reduction of sales inside, which presumably are people who aren't parking and walking in.
Yes.
Anybody else have questions for this witness?
I have a question. You said that the average or the timing is from three and a half to five minutes? Take as much as five minutes for... And that is from when they place the order until they pick up the order? Is that what that time is?
Correct.
But there's a preview board, and so that they'll have looked and decided what they want to order, and then there's the ordering board. And I see that from where they order, then there are four cars until they reach the... Or the potential of four car length where they reach the window. Why is it sometimes it can get as much as five minutes?
It depends on the order, the complexity of the order. If we see a $75 order, that may cause a ticket time to run high, and then we'll pull a car through, but it depends on the volume of the order.
I guess, would you see generally the drive-through or someone ordering a very large order might not go through, or do you see... I mean, is that... How does that work?
It's unpredictable.
Unpredictable?
Yeah, unpredictable.
And you're a regional manager, did you say?
I am.
So how many other Paneras do you have in the region that have drive-throughs?
I have... Currently, I have two.
You have two? And is this timing and queuing similar in those other operations?
Yes.
So you have stacking for eight or nine cars?
Yes.
This is pretty much the protocol on how Panera operates their drive-throughs, or is this...
Yeah, this is pretty standard across the company.
Where are those other two operations?
Edison and North Brunswick.
Thank you.
Can you kind of go through the mechanics of when somebody pulls in? You said there's menu boards. Like, how do they... Do they go up to the window and order? Is there a microphone? How do they... I've never been to a Panera Drive-through.
Sure. Sure. So you pull up, and there's a preview board. So, that's really dedicated for if somebody's at the ordering, the next set of menu panels, which has a microphone built into it and a screen that displays your order as we type it in, that you can preview the menu. So when you get to the menu board in the ordering station, you know exactly what you want.
So where is the ordering station? It says order menu sign. Where's that actual ordering station?
Again, I... What I would... Again, what I would say is, I mean, we could pull out the plan. Our engineer who's next will show you exactly where that is, but...
Okay. I was just asking about how the actual...
Yeah, no, no. And I want him to finish that, yeah. So, I mean, you know...
Yeah, and then you, you know, that's... You order it just as a normal drive-through would be any other typical drive-through that you go to, and then you pull around to the window. And we have one window.
And you said there is a microphone and a screen so you can see what is being ordered, and it's written up in front of you?
Correct.
So this would be a one-window drive-through?
Correct.
How many employees do you normally staff on a shift, I guess? Are they shifts or...
Sure. For a typical lunch shift, it can be anywhere from 14 to 18 to 20, depending on the day.
Okay. And will there be additional employees for purposes if the drive-through were there? Would you see more employees during the shift?
Absolutely, yeah. We would have to add a minimum three, more, like, four.
Because, as we said, it's a redundancy, so there...
So you're looking at 24, 25 employees?
Yep.
Sure. I have a question. So with peak times, when is the peak time of day that you drive-through is activated? Morning, noon, what time?
So in general, for Panera, I can only speak from Panera, it's 12 to 1.
Lunchtime.
Lunchtime. We do have cafés that have a nice volume for breakfast and for dinner. Not quite as big as lunch. Lunch is our biggest peak.
And Saturday, too, would be around the same time?
Interestingly enough, what, you know, what I've encountered in my drive-throughs is the weekends are a little bit slower on the drive-through because customers feel they have more time, they can get out of the car and go in and sit down.
And you said you see five to eight cars generally. Now, the other two locations, is there... When I pull up to a drive-through, I see a whole lot of cars. I kind of say, you know what, maybe I'll go in or I'll do something else. Is there a place on the other sites that they can kind of bypass around and go inside?
You'll see, and the site plan engineer will go through it, the way this one's configured, there's an opportunity to avoid before you even get into that situation. So, the way this one is designed is a little different, but it's kind of avoiding that situation. So you'll have a clear line of sight, as you'll hear them testify to. There'll be a clear line of sight, so before you even get involved, you'll decide, am I going to park instead? And that's just turning in that direction, or am I going to continue?
I'm not sure if you're the proponent or the antagonist, but does Panera own this lot?
I... Yeah, they don't. No. I can... John McDonough, I can... They're a tenant at this location.
Okay. And so is there a representative of the owner here?
He was at the last meeting, which we were here. Of course, he's signed an owner's consent, so we can't make an application unless the owner has consented to the application. And it required, as you'll hear, we also, as the site plan engineer will testify to, kind of vetting the application, we actually relocated a door that was used by one of the other tenants so that we could push the drive-through back further. So it involved the things that you would imagine in a multi-tenanted site. So, the owner was integrally involved. I know him, he and his wife were here. We were here in July when that other one, we stayed to the end, and then we adjourned it to last month, and that didn't work, so this month. And I know they were here that whole night. I don't see them here tonight, but again, the owner's consent is a... I can't... We can't make an application unless the owner, landlord, has consented.
Any other questions for this witness? Is there anybody from the product who has a question for this witness? Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Our next witness is Dave Wasotsky, our site plan engineer from Bowler Engineering.
Good evening. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the board is the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name, and then if you could give your business affiliation address.
Yep. My name is Dave Wasotsky. Last name is spelled W-I-S-O-T-S-K-Y, representing Bowler Engineering, B-O-H-L-E-R, 35 Technology Drive, Warren, New Jersey. This is address.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wasotsky, I do know you do a lot of this work, but perhaps you can fill the board in on your qualifications and relevant experience appearing before boards on applications like this.
states, testified in excess of over two hundred menus boards in New Jersey, but never this one before.
I would ask that he be qualified as a civil engineer.
Your license is active?
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Dave, why don't you walk the board members through your process of evaluating the site, the site plan that you ultimately came up with and, and filed and prepared, and then the relevant testimony addressing, as you go along, any of the questions that you heard the board members asked that perhaps are more appropriately addressed by some of the things you have to say.
Mr. Wasotzky, is that the identical site plan that was provided in the application?
This is not, this is an aerial exhibit prepared by our office.
Okay. Perfect. Can you just describe, you know, it for the record, and then also give the, any date of identification that's on there?
Yes, and I assume we're marking it?
Yeah, we'll mark that as A1.
A1?
Yep.
Okay. Good, thanks. A1, today's date, nine, twelve, eighteen. So, this is an aerial exhibit prepared by our office dated six, twenty-one, two thousand eighteen. It is an aerial representation of the site in question, so the property as identified in, in the opening is surrounded by the yellow band in the, in the center of the page, and I really put up this exhibit just to kind of orient us to the, to the overall site, where we are, kind of where the Panera is and how the site works. You want me to move back a little so you guys could see, are we good? Yeah? Good? Okay. So, for reference, north is towards the top of the page, the big, the road running east and west across the page, and the middle is Route twenty-two. The property is a five-point-six acre property that's shared by three tenants. There's Hobby Lobby, Five Below, and the Panera Bread. So, the white, the white roof is the building in question on, on the property, where Hobby Lobby is towards the west side, the Five Below operates in the middle, and then the Panera Bread is, is the eastern piece on end cap, where I'm just kind of penciling in kind of the square footage of the Panera, which, the Panera is, it's a forty-five-hundred square foot existing store, and that was, as previously described, as a walk-up store only. So, this site is accessed off of Route twenty-two, it only has one access in, one out, right in front, and then circulation around the site is, is pretty much in the traditional sense of, of shopping centers. The, the in-out movement has a long throat towards the front of the building, where then traffic is dispersed to the left and the right, into parking fields that are all standard width aisles and, and parking spaces. It's worth noting that this site has an existing parking variance that was, that was previously approved, so based on the square footage of the retail spaces and the restaurant space in the overall building, two-hundred-and-ninety-two spaces would be required to meet the zoning code. As of today, two-hundred-and-seventy-six exist on, on the overall site. When, just trying to, yeah, I think, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, and I'm going to get you the, a survey view of just our piece to, to drill into the actual Panera and the circulation around it, but suffice it to say that the car circulation is very typical. Truck circulation happens in a counterclockwise rotation around the building, so trucks entering in off of Route twenty-two, come in and turn right, traveling them around the front of the building, and then counterclockwise around the back. So, and, and all the loading docks face towards the east, so as trucks pull around, they then back into the various loading docks, and there's one, two, three along the back, and there also happens to be one that is on the eastern face, and that's space that's used by, that's a loading space, an at-grade loading space that's used by the Five Below. And that's, that's pertinent only for when I show you what, what the proposal is, because that door has to be moved as, as portion, as part of this to make room for, for the drive-through operation. So, as far as surrounding uses, just, just to get us oriented, we have commercial uses towards the north, towards the east, and then towards the south, there is residential use, which is the closest, the closest residential piece is well over four or five hundred feet away from where the Panera is, or any of the work that's going on, going on here. And to, directly to the west of this, there, there isn't, there is an empty lot, and then additional commercial, as you see, going up and down twenty-two. So, that's kind of the overview of the site. Now, I'd like to take you in, drill in a little bit to show you the survey of the existing conditions right around the Panera. So, this exhibit, this is one that was actually submitted with the application, this is the survey that, that the site plan is based off of. This is the partial topographic and location survey prepared by Control Point Associates, which is dated four, twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen.
All right, let's mark that as A2. Thank you.
A2. And for this one, once again, it's, it's roughly oriented the same as before, however, US twenty-two is towards the north side of the page, which is towards the left, meaning this is the, this is the bump out where the Panera Bread is, and just drawing its outlines similar to the previous one, in rough square footages, that's, that's where the Panera is, on, on the corner, on the corner of the building. So, access to this, this Panera right now is through doors in the front, patrons park either on the north side or the east side of the site, and they walk into the front of the building, or into a side door that's accessible for customers, that allows them to walk in, and the bakery café operates much as, you know, a typical restaurant. As of right now, we're putting this X, that's, that's an existing at-grade loading door that is, that is used by the Five Below, just, just the, a bigger version. And on the proposed site plan, I'm going to show you how we have to, have to move that. So, as you can see, as we're drilling into the loading, which happens here along this, the southern end of the, of the, of the page, trucks can only travel in this, in this direction along the site, they come here, they do their loading, and then they, then they leave out this way. Also pertinent on this little edge here is the, these boxes here on the southern end are the, the trash receptacles and dumpsters for, for the center. So, this whole area is, is fenced off for, for typical trash, trash use, okay? And that, that's pertinent, of course, for when I show you how the drive-through works and, and how we're getting all the vehicles in and out. So, that gives us a, a little bit about the existing condition. Now, now I'll show you what we're trying to do. So, this exhibit, this is, and I'll mark it as A3, while I remember. This is an exact representation of drawing C4 that's in your packet, it's, it's a site plan drawing, with the aerial superimposed on top of it, behind it, I mean, and then colorized for presentation. So, so the intent is to give you where the proposal work is with the color, and then beyond that, you can see the existing conditions as they're going to remain today. And so, so for reference, once again, north is really towards the left part of the page, you can see the, the corner of Route twenty-two. The entrance to the center, as described previously on the survey, is down here in the bottom northwest corner. As patrons enter the site, and if they want to go to the Panera, they turn left and they come down this aisle. Patrons who want to park in, and walk into the café, park along in the front here, or, or along the, the eastern side. Now, the new addition is if you, they want to go into the drive-through instead, we've now kind of shown that representation of what happened. So, taking you through it step by step. Patrons wanting to enter the drive-through will turn right at the corner of the building, and now, once they approach the drive-through, they're going to enter into the drive-through by, by turning left and entering into the drive-through queue. At the beginning of the queue, there is, there is a safety bar, a height bar, because once, once they get through, through the drive-through and into the end, they're going to be beneath the canopy. So, as much as ti, as typical drive-throughs have, there's, there's a bar there to make sure vehicles over, over a certain height know that they clearly, they can't come through. Patrons enter in, if there's queue there, they wait in the queue until they get up to the preview board. The preview board, which was described before, is this, this blue, blue space that's roughly beneath the, the fourth car in, into the queue. And the preview board, just looking just to make sure I get it right, is a twenty-two square foot board, it stands four foot ten in height, and essentially has, has pictures and details of the food that can be ordered. So, people, while they're waiting in queue, behind, behind the next person who's actually at the order board, they're able to see kind of, and start, and start deciding what, what, what items they might want. Much as you see...
I just want to point out, and exactly where that is on there, where that preview board is.
That's, that's that spot.
Okay.
Okay. So, the next, the next car up, then, then they're at the menu, the menu order board, and that, I'll, I'll put, put that with another, another X right there. So, that board is, is a thirty-five square foot board that stands four foot eleven, that has a microphone box, you know, and a, and a readout display. If you've been to any kind of modern drive-through in any kind of store recently, you'll see as, as you read out the order, they kind of display back to you what, what you ordered, you're communicating with a, with a teller or one of the retail personnel who's inside the store, and they're, they're calculating what your order is, then they tell you what the total is, and they, and then they'll tell you to, to pull forward when, when, when space is available. So, the unique part in this drive-through layout, in that we have not done what many would consider the typical drive-through layout, as you see, drive-throughs wrap around, wrap around the building, so they have a queue. But because of the, the length and depth of the store that we have here, and the fact that it's all loading and trucks that happen behind there, we don't want to mix cars back there, so, so this, this is a case where the drive-through is, is, is going in a clockwise direction towards, towards the store. So, af, so after they've ordered, in front of them is a stop sign and a stop bar. So, after the order, they need to look and make sure there's no traffic coming, and that's what the signage is there for. We've designed it such that they have clear sight distance in, in all directions, both to any trucks that are coming from, from in the store, towards, towards the garbage receptacles, across the parking lot, and, and down, and when, and when it's clear, they join into the, the rest of the queue leading up to the store. And that's, this is that three and a half to five minute timeframe that was, that was referenced by the, the area manager, in that while they're waiting for that queue to go, go past, the three, the three to five minutes happens here, until you're the last car in line at the, at the very front of the line, which is the, which is the pickup window. And that's this, this piece, it's the pickup window. Leaving the pickup window, you're also faced with a stop sign and stop bar, you once again have, have sight distance to be able to look in, in each, in each direction, and both the landscape and the grading and everything is accommodating for, for that, and then, then you're, you're able to make your left turn and, and leave the, leave the area in the store the same way you came in. A couple other features of the, of the site which are pertinent to the circulation, a stop and do not, a stop bar and a do not enter bar was added here behind the store. Previously, there, there's nothing there, meaning the trucks that come through here, it was kind of like a free-flow situation, not that there's a large volume of trucks, you know, you're probably talking about a couple, handful per day for the overall center, but nevertheless, we wanted to add the extra precaution that trucks coming through are now forced to stop, make sure that they look, and they, and they see that there's an actual drive-through operation here and car, and vehicles coming through. So, they stop, they have sight distance in each direction, too, and they're able to make, make those moves through. Now, of course, the typical deliveries are, and, and garbage removal are not going to happen on the peaks when we, when we expect to see up to the eight cars in the, in the drive-through, but nevertheless, we have to make precautions for the, the truck, car interface. One other, a couple other pieces of how the drive-through works, so, and it was, I was going to address it, but I believe the question was asked, is, is there a bypass or what, what happens? The queue, you come, you come around the store, the queue is full, if it happens to be full, and you decide you don't want to wait, you know, what, what happens? Do you get stuck? What happens? So, and that's why we, this is still a two-lane, two-lane roadway, twenty-four foot wide, stand, standard aisles. It's two, two ways, it goes two ways today, it's, it'll be two ways when, when we're through. Two reasons. One is for patrons who, they come around the store and they see, oh, the, okay, this drive-through, this drive-through queue is full, I don't want to wait here and, and be able to wait to cross in, in the next available spot, I think I'd like to park, there's no more parking spaces here, okay, I, I can now go, I can now go through, perform a turn, a K-turn, and, and operate and go back into the parking area. The second reason is because of the proximity of where the garbage facilities are on this store, we think the garbage trucks will have a tendency not to want to go around the entire store to get to the garbage, and plus, some of them are also the head-in kind, so they're, they're going to want to come through here to be able to take care of the garbage like they do today. So, with, with that in mind, and the garbage truck will also have room to turn around, but the, with that in mind, we're keeping this, this access, the, the two ways as it, as it happens today. So, happy to answer questions on the access, but I, or the, the circulation operation, but I got just a couple points to get across about kind of rounding out the rest of the site plan stuff, and then I'll entertain anything. If you notice from, from the survey, this is showing you exhibit A2, real quick, back to this, there, there was, there was parking where the drive-through was, so we did, we did lose parking in this, and that's why Paul mentioned that we're, we're talking about a parking variance. So, there was two-hundred-and-seventy-six spaces on the overall site, with, with the addition of this drive-through, there's now two-hundred-and-fifty-two spaces left in, in the site. And our traffic engineer has done a parking accumulation study to, to explain to you how that works and, and why that works, plus with the justification of the Panera area manager, that they actually see a decrease in their, in the demand for parking when, when they put these in. It, I don't think we're exacerbating the problem there, but we'll get to that with, with the rest, with the rest of the testimony. The Five Below door that I referenced to you that's going to be relocated is now relocated towards the, the back, the back of the building, where, where I'm drawing the X. So, the, the same, the same way they used to, they used to park their trucks here, walk in through this, walk in through here and get into their store, now, this, this, this will be an at-grade door, which then gets them in, in, in the same way. Panera loading happens, their trucks circulate around this, around the site, parked back here in, in the loading area, and then there's a, there's a ramp and a sidewalk that leads, that leads into a door into the new vestibule addition where, where all the loading happens. So, all the loading in the, in the Panera store happens as it does today, it's at-grade, the things are wheeled in on, on, on just a hand cart, indoor, indoor carry, same thing, same thing as before. With this, there's, we've updated the lighting, there, there's three new lights being put here to optimize where they need to be for the drive-through. It was, it was noted in your engineer's comment letter that we, we expect them at twenty feet, which is actually a variance or a waiver condition, which wasn't, wasn't intended, so I apologize for it. The standard is eighteen, we, we would agree to make those lights eighteen, as opposed to the twenty that's shown, still works. There is additional landscape being proposed, three new trees, twelve shrubs, six grasses and various, various plants, so with that, there's a, there's a minor reduction in impervious cover, the, the lock coverage dropped from seventy-six point nine percent down to seventy-six point two percent. It's not a huge amount, but nevertheless, this does result in additional green space. The, the existing lock coverage is, is a variance condition, so that is, that is a slight betterment of the existing variance, variance condition. Signage would be the last piece to indicate directly. There is a proposal to just swap out the sign face on the freestanding sign, but they have an existing freestanding sign in, in a large pylon for the entire center, Panera has one of the panels. We're not proposing any new signage, that panel's just going to be swapped out for one that now says "Drive Through" on it. On building-mounted signage, there's, there's proposed two eight-square-foot signs being proposed to add, added to the site, one on each face of where the Panera has. So, each face currently has a Panera Bread sign, and just below it, an eight-square-foot panel that says, that says "Drive Through" is now being added. That's a variance condition, only in number of signs where, where just one is permitted, we're now, we're now adding, it has two, we're adding two more. I would note that there, as far as the allowable square footage of signs that's allowable on this, the, the Panera is using roughly, roughly fifty percent of what's allowed as far as area, so, but don't think it's a, it's certainly an egregious use of sign, signage, they're just trying to get the point across that they now have a drive-through. So, with that, I think I've addressed kind of the direct testimony, but I'm sure there's questions, comments, thoughts.
You, you said that there's two-hundred-and-ninety-two spaces, that they're required two-seventy-six. I, I'm guessing that's the entire lot?
That is the entire site.
So, what is the actual number of spaces that are, that are, are fronting the Panera?
Sure. So, and that's actually the way, when we did our site plan analysis, we calculated it for just the area in and around the, the Panera itself. So, existing today, there's seventy-six parking spaces in, in the portion of the site plan that you see, that see in front of you. Now, just granted that some of those spaces are used probably by Five Below customers because the Five Below door is only roughly, roughly around, around here where I'm putting the X. So, so, but nevertheless, there are seventy-six in that area. So, we're losing twenty-four, so there will be fifty-two spaces in that area when we're done. The demand or the, the requirement, based on your zoning code, is forty-five spaces. Now, that is...
I don't, I don't think that's what I read in the traffic report, is it forty-five?
Yeah, so, we calculated it in the site plan in a very conservative way, so let me, I'll walk through how, how we came about.
Right, he's going to explain.
Yeah, so, in, in the site plan parking analysis, we, we took, there's, there's two standards on how to measure the parking requirement for a restaurant. One is one per sixty square foot of patron area, or one parking space for every two and a half seats in the store. So, we took a conservative look at it, and we took the entire store area of the forty-five-hundred existing square feet plus the three-hundred-and-eighty-four square foot addition, and applied one per sixty to that, and came up with, with the number that you see on the site plan, which is eighty-two, which, which is, was a very conservative look at it, and actually when we read and reread the zoning code, the standard is it's one per sixty per areas accessible to patrons. So, the areas accessible to patrons in the store is only twenty-four-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet, which doesn't change. So, if we apply the one to sixty for that, the requirement would be forty-one spaces. If we, but there's a hundred-and-eleven seats in the store, divided by two and a half gives you forty-five. So, that's why I came to kind of clarify, and, and I guess that's the right word, clarify what, what the parking requirement is by the zoning code and, and kind of what we, what we proposed. So, back to it, just to reiterate, there's fifty-two spaces left in the Panera area by the zoning code, unless your engineer or planner corrects me with what I just said, I, I believe that though, Carmen, it's forty-five.
Now, the, in terms of any other questions you want to add?
we proposed. So, back to it, just to reiterate, there's 52 spaces left in the Panera area by the zoning code, unless your engineer or planner corrects me what I just said, I, I believe that though, Carmen, is 45.
Now, the, in terms of any other questions you want to add, any questions? Have you covered, you covered it all?
Yeah, I think, I think that covers it.
And we will, in terms of the parking, again, we have Cory Chase, who's the traffic engineer who prepared actual parking accumulation report, so further discuss that as well.
You know, there's also, while I'm talking about parking, sorry, there's, there's one point, other point to reiterate, and your engineer and his review editor picked up on it too, that we showed, at the ADA space count, we showed two ADA spaces being removed, meaning the, the ADA spaces here would be two, which doesn't technically meet the ADA requirements by, by itself, which of course, we're not able to get relief from ADA requirements. But when you look at the overall center, the required ADA spaces for the, for this shopping center are six, and the, and the center current, will have when this is done, nine. So, so as far as we're concerned, the, the site meets, also meets the ADA requirements by, and then some.
Just a, the requirement would be 11 on the existing parking. You'd need one for 25, so you'd need, you'd need 11 on the whole side.
In the current condition, right?
The current.
Yeah.
Actually, you'd need 12, because 276, that keeps you to 12 spaces.
And now we're at 252.
Correct, so you'd be, you'd be at 11 overall. And they have to be in close proximity, the road of the entrance, so you can't have more on the far side of the side.
They, I, I think for what it's worth, they are dispersed throughout the site. You have, you have some in front, in front of the Panera and the Five Below, and then, and then others in, in banks in front of the rest of the, in front of the rest of the space. I'll, I'll check the count, but I could defer to what you're saying.
And again, you're correct, it's not something the board can give a variance from. It's federal statute laws, civil rights.
I mean, we'll take a look, like, obviously standing here testifying, we'll, we'll say, obviously, we're going to meet the ADA requirement.
It's not something that...
Whatever it is.
So would that reduce the overall parking count if you had to add more ADA?
Yeah, no, I, I don't think so. If, if we have to find space to add, to add to, we're, we're going to, we're going to find a way without reducing parking.
And again, I recommend that be near the Panera, because there's really parking there, plus the, the code also says that it has to be close proximity to the entrance, of course. So, you know, again, you have to really look at that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that means just looking at it. If indeed we do need two more, the easy, there, there are two spaces right here, and islands on both sides with, with space enough for me to, to create the, the striping necessary in between, we would put them there.
Can I ask you? I was going to ask a question about those two spots that you have there. How much room back of those spots do people actually have to back up and manipulate in and out of those spots?
It's a full 24-foot aisle, but behind it...
So it's 24 feet to back a car out and turn it and, and...
Which is, sorry.
I know the traffic expert will be here, but 24 feet seems really tight.
24 feet is a standard kind of commercial access aisle that, that not only in this center, but, but probably every center in, in this town and most, it's kind of a, it's kind of a standard used across, you know, across the country as far, as far as geometry to set up parking, parking lots. So I think, I think it may be deceptive looking here because you have the, the drive-through access behind it. But if you look at pure geometry, it has, it has plenty of room.
Can you, just take me back to the way that the trucks are supposed to, right, so the trucks come from the back of the building, and then they are going to drive through the yellow area, right, they'd make a left and...
Yes, that's right, that's right. Loading trucks, whether they're for hobby lobby or, or Five Below, they're, they're coming this way along the building, they stop here to be able to see, and then they're going to pull through the, the aisle as they do today. It's, it's the same aisle width, same geometry as those trucks use currently, and that's what they'll, that's what they'll do when we're done.
Okay, but what's being lost though, right? So, so if you've got a big 18-wheeler coming around the back of the building, right, so you're bumping this out, right, so that's what, 14 feet on that side, and then 12 feet on the other side?
Yeah, so, let's take a, take a, this is, this is Exhibit A2, the survey, how, how it exists today. So currently, the, the trucks, same orientation, the trucks will come clockwise, sorry, counterclockwise around the building, and they're going to take a left, and those, whether 18-wheeler, box truck, you pick it, comes through and navigates back out, back out, back out the center. So, that same aisle width, and that's the same aisle width that there is.
Yeah, is it, I was going to ask, is it the same width, the drive aisle?
Um, let me get my scale to measure, but it, it's not exactly the same. Today, scaling it, I measure 26 feet actually from, from back of parking space to back of parking space, as to what they are. And now it's, now it will be 24. 24 from landscaped island to gore area, which, that's, that's this striped area there, which is, which is flat pavement. So they're 24. But we've taken a look at the, the truck turning through here, and it, I mean, it's designed appropriately. We, we don't anticipate any, any, any issues for the existing loading operation.
And let's assume that there's more than five cars that queue up, right, that, for the preview board. And maybe this is for the traffic engineer, but can you just, you know, tell me the distance between that back, that, that car on the far left and the, that first spot that is beyond the landscaping?
This one?
Correct.
Yeah, well, there's, I, I can, certainly. And that distance from where that, that back car is to where that, that parking, parking space starts is 32 feet. But nevertheless, we also remember that this is, this is a two-way aisle, right? So, so people coming around this building are really supposed to, are staying in, in their left lane, and their, and, and my anticipation, if, if it indeed happened, that, that you have, but the, the, he, the testimony was that they don't see a queue more than eight. This one has nine, but let's say, you know, hypothetically, if, if there was such a rush because they were running a special on whatever smoothies, and everybody wanted to come through on a drive-through, whatever, if you happen to have more than eight, my anticipation with the, the ninth car would be, would, would need to wait in this spot across the aisle until he can get in.
Okay, and under that plan, how far is that from the, the car that's in front of there?
How far is that? That's...
Are you saying this ninth car that's stacking, right, so that, that car on the...
So I would anticipate, you know, the ninth car would want to be there, and he has, you know, over, that's, he has roughly, there's roughly 30 feet to fit, fit a vehicle in here.
Saying the car, right, so just, just to the, just to the left of the landscape, right? So the, the car's waiting there. How much distance would you, did you model into this that there's behind that car, assuming that, that now that car's to back out?
This one?
No, the one, the first one.
Oh, oh, this?
Yeah.
Here, here to back out?
Correct.
I see what you mean. If there's a car here?
Exactly.
All right, yeah, okay. So, so once again, you have your, your typical 24-foot aisle that's in a, in a commercial lot, and, and so picture like any, any kind of commercial retail establishment, if you happen to have someone waiting in the aisle to, to pull into another space there, and someone, someone next to them is trying, trying to back up, yeah, they probably have to wait. I mean, yeah, if, if you're, if you're, if, if a car is hypothetically parked here, and so, and someone is in one of these spaces trying, trying to back out, they would, they would have limited room to do that. They would wind up waiting.
And then I would assume that, that it would also be difficult for the cars to exit the pickup line though? Right, because now you've got a car that's waiting, there's a car that's backing up, and where do they go?
Yeah, so if a car's waiting, that, that provides no impedance to someone trying, trying to leave the site because that's the, the standard kind of two-way aisle operation, that, that you can get in and out of. If, if hypothetically, you have someone wa, waiting in this spot to get into the queue, someone trying to pull through, and someone backing out, you'd have, I mean, the same, same issues you have in any kind of shopping center or retail outlet, there's, someone has to wait, and someone has to give right away.
I've got more questions, but certainly, keep going.
Okay.
I'll go on that, when you're done, I have one. And outside of having the, a stop sign painted on the ground at the top of the arc, so to the right between where the trucks would pass through, what, you know, what, would you expect is, what would stop somebody from just driving through there? Other than a, other than, you know, a, a stop which is painted on the ground?
Which stop sign are we talking about?
So to the right now?
This one?
Your point to the car at the top, they're going to drive through to get the food, right, that car at the top right there they're pointing to.
This guy.
So, you know, what, other than something which is painted on the ground, what, is there anything that would prevent them from driving, and that loop also being closed?
They have the, they have the stop bar and the stop sign. Currently, we didn't, we, we haven't anticipated the need, just based on the limited, the limited use of access trying to get through here, of a, for example, a do not block the box sign, or, or, or patch painting in this area, you know, that, that you, that you may see, and which we employ and have employed in, in areas where we have higher traffic. But here, the, really the only conflict is, as I think, is, is rare, and, and that's why we, we think the stop bar and the stop sign is, is enough in a situation like this.
So this wasn't discussed at all, I don't know if it comes to the next person. Where are the employees parked?
They currently could park wherever they want. There's, there's no differentiation on site of employee-only parking or, or patron-only. There's, there's, all spaces are unmarked.
So when you do the 41, does that include employee parking?
Forty, 45.
The four, well, right.
You're increasing, you're increasing the employees by three to five per shift?
Um, yes, yeah, yeah, in a, in a practical manner. But, but the zoning code isn't based on, you know, that, it's just based on square foot of, you know, building and/or restaurant space like, like we discussed. So, so from a zoning perspective, that's one. But, but the truth is, you're, you're right, there are, there will be more employees.
And just to go back, give it a kind of add a little bit more in terms of, oh shit, you're talking about employees, does Panera, how does Panera handle that as far as parking spaces and employees?
Yeah, so unless they're openers or closers, unless they're coming in at 5:00 in the morning or leaving at 10 o'clock at night, which is three to four associates, we ask that they park furthest away as possible for, for our guests to have the parking.
No, I understand, but if they're furthest away as possible, if it's on this side of the parking lot, I mean, I frequent the store all the time, so I know what goes on there. The parking is impossible as it is now. If you have employees taking those spots, that would make a lot of sense, why it's, there's trouble parking as it is now. You're just making it worse. So I would, I'm curious on how you're going to tackle that.
Would the, and, and in answer to the question, would be furthest, literally the other side of the parking? Correct.
If they park on it, that's another story, but if they're parking on...
Correct. Yeah, it's not, we ask that they park in the furthest spot away, not, you know, we, when we talk about that parking lot being, we don't just talk about those 76 spaces that we have, it's that whole parking lot in the center. We do the safety piece at night and in the morning when it's dark, so they can be close to the entrances. But during the day, when a majority of our folks are coming in, it's furthest away from the building.
So wouldn't be in that, sure, it's not in that 76, it's on the far end.
Correct.
Usually...
The other piece, I, I mean, I could add to that, is 75% of our associates commute to that cafe. They're not driving.
What do you mean, you commute, that they, the bus?
They take a bus, they take an Uber. Yeah.
Anybody else have questions for this witness?
I have, sure. Um, the, the architectural plan showed a door next to the, to the drive-through, not shown on the site plan. Is, is the door going to be, and there is a door there now currently in existing conditions, I believe, and the architectural plan showed the door still being next to the drive-through, is that going to remain?
Give me a sec, Bob, I just have to look to, to double check. So, it shows a door on the, the west side of the, of the drive-through. Right, Bob?
Um, yes.
Yeah. So, I, I believe the architect does intend for that to still be a door for patrons to be able to exit the building, which means some of the landscape area that we show here, some of the green is going to have to be sidewalk to connect, connect to that door. Right, that was, that was a coordination item that we still have to fix.
Okay, so that sidewalk will then be extended so that they can walk toward the front of the store?
Yes, yes.
All right, and that is, as you said, so that is a patron door?
Yes, as, as it is today. Yep.
A couple of facts from truck circulation. I just happened to be at the site today, taking, taking a visit, and there was a hobby lobby truck, which happened to be, I would say WB67, the large trailer, the large front cab truck exiting. And I, I was pulling in off of 22, and it was leaving out of 22. And it kind of got me thinking, so how does that truck navigate? It, it probably, I, we didn't get any turning tentacles, but I have to assume that that's going to navigate through the area like we had just talked about, that again, around the front of the building, the front drive aisle right next to it. That has to take up the whole curb, curb, both-way, both-way traffic.
When it's, when it's coming through...
It's going to take up the whole space, not just stay in a lane.
Yeah, I, I...
Around that curb.
I, I would have to agree with you in that. I mean, we know trucks get in and out of there today, so we, we didn't necessarily model the conditions, what happened outside of, you know, where, where we're looking. So we were concerned to make sure, we know, we know the trucks could still come through here and get, get, and get through our drive-through. But, but yeah, the, the way this is configured, even in the existing case today, he, they, they take up the, both lanes in order to get in there.
And my concern is, we're, you know, we're, we're, the whole package, we're intensifying the, the movements around, you know, that, those, that corner there, and the truck, like you said, it happened to see, it was a full-size, large WB67, and, you know.
Yep.
I don't know how often Hobby Lobby has deliveries.
That's what I was going to ask.
This was at 5:00. This was, you know, this is early in the morning here.
I, I don't know Hobby Lobby's delivery schedule either, and it, but that's why we tried to respect the geometry as, as much as we can through here. We believe that, I mean, even if our drive-through was operating at full capacity, we can get that truck through here and out safely. But I think, I'd like to think, just knowing, but from typical loading of these stores and stuff, they're, we're, we're not going to have typically conflicts at the peak times. But even if it happened, the site could accommodate it, I think.
Now, we have several questions in our comment letter about conflict and movements. Are you going to testify to that, or is the traffic engineer?
Uh, we're going to do a little of both. I, I think I, I tried to address some of the discussion about conflicts and how we think it works through now. Cory, our traffic engineer, will, will highlight some of that as well. If you have more questions after, we'd be happy to answer. I would also add that all, all the other typical, the, the technical comments that are, that are in both your professional's letters, we, we would agree to comply with. Looking through them, there was nothing that we don't, didn't think we could, couldn't accommodate.
Well, again, one of my questions was about the duet, and again, I think you testified that it's a K-turn, sort of in front of a garbage dumpster, right in that same, like, area, all the way to the right. And that's, that's going to be a very busy, active area. That's where the car is making the order, and he's waiting to get into the next section. And, you know, we all go to drive-throughs, there are, everyone's pushing not to get out of that drive-through lane. So I'm concerned, as the board member was about vehicle blocking there, and now somebody who's not familiar with the pattern avoided going to the drive-through because they don't want to wait in line, and now we're telling them that they got to do a K-turn, it's really a tight, tight location. I just don't think it's a, you know, it's not, from a practical engineering design standpoint, I, I, I'm not that comfortable with it. I, I, I'm not that comfortable with it. And then over to the left-hand side, where the last, say, a ninth car would wanna sneak in there, he's gonna be blocking that twenty-two, wide, wide aisle, just wants to kinda nose in behind the last car in that queue, you know, I see that all the time, that cars might not know.
And this, was where one...
My, my concern is that at lunchtime, where the peak, you know, everyone, twelve o'clock, when I go to lunch, everyone's coming at once, so I'm just wanted to see what, I don't see how that would be avoided if a car doesn't go, doesn't go to the stop bar, or, or that, you know.
So the, the peak that Panera sees is eight, this design accommodates nine without any issue, and even, I think, as we discussed, the tenth car then, could still be accommodated on the site with, by causing, you know, potentially limited issues. But eight is the number that they see, and that's why this design, I think, is conservative for what, for what they, they want. Now, granted, I, I understand the comments, that, that between this point here, and this, this point here, there is, there is the potential for conflict points, which is why we, we looked at the site distance to make sure people could see. I think the signage shown is appropriate for, based on the, the usage of, of people and trucks coming through here, which is going to be limited to, you know, call it a handful a day. But if the board is concerned with such thing, or, or your engineer, I mean, we, we can, we could certainly consider and work with you to, to do additional signage, like a do not block the box type thing, or, or hatching like, like that, or, or additional signage out front as, for queuing spaces.
Yeah, 'cause I can't see the person after the order, it still has a stop sign there, what's gonna stop them from pulling up? I don't see any way they're gonna stop.
So, in other, other fast food or, or drive-through applications that we've done in unusual situations, there's also, like, like miniature traffic light type situations, like, like, like a red light that says, you know, do, do not move forward until, until light is green, and then, and then, and then the system is automatically timed, so when that, that car, that car pulls out, you have, you know, a, a green, a green switch to allow them to come, to come through. We can, we can look at options like that, although, although, once again, I will go back and just say that, that I think, based on the amount of usage coming through here, the signage we have is, is reasonable, having, having designed literally thousands of drive-throughs for many, many users. But once again, I'm, I, I'm certainly sensitive to your, your thoughts, and I understand we are a used variants too, and have, and have a burden of proof to, to make you comfortable that this will operate. So if there's other signage or, or lighting type of, things like that, I, we're, we're happy to offer that, if, if it needs to be.
This is probably addressed before, in talking about the deliveries, typically, at what point in the day are deliveries made?
For Panera in particular?
Uh, Panera, and if you have any information on the other tenants.
I don't have, I don't know Hobby Lobby or Five Below, but...
Yeah, I don't think we have something, we're kind of specifying as to other tenants. I know that Bobby could probably talk about some of the deliveries, you know, for, for Panera, you know, in terms of, of size of trucks and, and timing generally. I mean, I, I think it's, you know, we talked about, you know, near opening and closing times, but if you have the ability to kinda comment on that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'd imagine, you don't ask, you're, you're not scheduling deliveries during your peak time?
Correct. Yeah, our, our fresh dough facility trucks come as early in the morning as possible. We have, you know, between five and seven AM, and then our Sigma deliveries are, if not overnight, the earliest they come is eight-thirty, nine, nine-thirty at night. It's, for us, it's off-peak, we can't take deliveries during peak.
Just to piggyback, on any given day, what would a breakfast queue be in your two drive-through stores?
I'll see fifteen cars an hour.
Fifteen, okay. So, and, and your previous stores, with the delivery coming in at eight or nine o'clock, have there been any recorded issues?
No, none.
Well, let, let me ask you a question, 'cause I think I know the answer. The other drive-throughs are wraparound drive-throughs, that go straight around the building.
Correct.
You know the one on Flor, on Route ten in East Hanauer, go straight around the building?
I'm not familiar with that one.
Well, you just built it, I don't, it's...
Yeah.
The other, who's the other one? Clark.
Yep.
I've been to the Clark one, again, it's an easy wraparound.
Yeah, Edison, you have to navigate through the parking lot.
Never been to the one.
And it wraps around the back of the building, but you have to navigate through the parking lot to get to the, to the first menu panel. We have other sites like this in, in the system. I know we have one in St. Louis, that mirrors something familiar to this, so. Hope that helps.
Yeah, I just, I would've thought you would've done a little more research on the deliveries from the other two, just to give a timing, to give us more of an idea of when the other two businesses get their deliveries.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I, I wouldn't think they're prime time in the middle of the day, but you never, you don't know, I don't, I don't know personally.
And that's certainly something, you know, obviously, here, this is something that, you know, our goal, you know, Panera has done their, their due diligence in terms of the effectiveness of this plan, and as you just heard, you know, this works in several other locations, but our job is to make sure that you have everything you need. So certainly, you know, going back and getting some of that, and kinda getting through this testimony, and perhaps having some key items that we need to follow up with, and regroup on and give you more information, is, is absolutely something we do. We, you know, I'm kind of disappointed in a sense that the owner isn't here, because we had worked with them, I mean, this, the relocation of the door of the other tenant was obviously something that we identified as a benefit.
Yeah, he would probably know more about...
Exactly.
...the tenants.
And he was here for, for that time, so frankly, I was surprised. So, that's something, again, we can, we can certainly get that information, have someone qualified to answer it, to, to work into it. So as we're going through and making those notes, and I think it's helpful to get through this and get through the testimony, hear what your concerns are, so that we can do our job and come back and, and address them.
Okay.
I have, I have another question. So, given this is an existing building, existing parking lot, have you done any studies of, during peak time, how many open spots there are?
Yes. Next witness, he's done the study, so he'll, he'll put that on record.
And then, and just have a question, just on, on, follow up on, so, I see that, that obviously, the owner of the building's not here, and I don't know what the process would be of noticing the tenants, since he owns the building. Have the other tenants been noticed of this application?
As, of course, as a, as a practical matter, and I'm...
I just don't see it on the logs, I don't...
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it, it's two separate things. There's, you know, certainly, the public notice that's required by law is done. The tenants in the building, it's property owners, but as a practical matter, this application, the landlord, I don't represent the landlord, of course, would have leases that obligate him to do everything that need be done, and something that's affecting the other tenants. So, of course, the relocation, for example, of the door for Five Below would require their specific consent, and obviously, Hobby Lobby, that would be the landlord's responsibility to notify them. I'm certain that, you know, from my general experience, any tenant in a multi-tenant situation would know when there's something happening that's affecting, affecting the whole center. But again, I can certainly have...
I just like that confirmation that that actually happened.
Yeah.
That these guys have a vested interest in something which, you know, Panera's application is based on their business being better, Five Below is certainly affected by this, and if you're moving the other traffic to the other side, so is Hobby Lobby.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is, as a practical matter, certainly Five Below had to consent to the relocation of their door, and what I, what I'm saying is, again, I don't represent, and I've actually, other than a few minutes, not spoken with the owner, Panera does that directly, but just from my experience, what I'm saying is, if I'm the owner landlord, and I'm doing something, I have to give my consent to this, I'm not gonna turn around and do it when I'm now creating lease issues, or having a, yeah, that's, you know...
We assume that that's the case, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, so that's why, 'cause that's what the consent is for. But yeah, I, I hear you, and that's, that's fine, we can, we can certainly answer that more, more clearly, if you like.
Does anybody else have any more questions for this witness?
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Uh, wait, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
We need a quick two-minute break. Sam?
Thank, thank you. Hello, yeah, thank you. So, the next witness is going to be Corey Chase from Atlantic Traffic, who has prepared a parking accumulation study and has addressed other traffic concerns, so...
Mr. Chase, I'll swear again. You swear testimony you're about to give, and any evidence you present to the board is the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Please give your name for the record and your business address, spelling your last name, please.
Certainly, Corey Chase, last name is C.H.A.S.E., business address is thirty-five Technology Drive, Warren, New Jersey.
Mr. Chase, can you please provide the board with some general background of your qualifications and your experience providing similar testimony before other boards?
Sure. I'm a senior project manager with Atlantic Traffic and Design Engineers, where I've worked for the past sixteen years. I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, license is currently in good standing, also licensed in seven other states, and I've been qualified as an expert in traffic engineering before over seventy-five municipalities.
Ask him to be so qualified?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chase, you heard the testimony so far, and we understand that you were focused primarily on the parking accumulation study, the parking demand, and other traffic circulation concerns. Perhaps you can summarize for the board your analysis and conclusions regarding that, and any other comments you deem relevant as expert conclusions in, in response to the comments and questions you've heard from the board so far?
Certainly. Our invol, our involvement in this application was a two-part. One, as Paul had mentioned, we analyzed the existing parking demand of the subject property, both from a Panera standpoint, as well as an overall development standpoint. Also, given that the site fronts Route twenty-two, we approached NJ DOT to obtain what they call a letter of no interest, which indicates that there'd be no significant increase in traffic as a result of the development proposal, and no new access permit would be required. So NJ DOT actually, just the other day, on September tenth, issued that letter of no interest approval, which we could certainly submit a copy to the board as evidence.
I would mark that as, as A four. It's a September tenth, two thousand eighteen, letter from the state of New Jersey to John Harder of Atlantic Traffic and Design, and it's, the ray is NJ DOT letter of no interest. So I would mark that as A four.
So that approval indicates that NJ DOT doesn't see that the development proposal would generate a significant increase in traffic, and they're not gonna require any further involvement, no new access permitting would be required, nothing like that. So, from that standpoint, we were happy to get that prior to the hearing, so we could provide a copy to you guys, confirming that we have reached out to DOT, and, and they don't have a vested interest in the application. As I noted, our primary involvement was really to review the site circulation, the drive-through operations that Mr. Wasowski described to you, as well as take a look at the existing parking demand, as well as the impacts of the drive-through addition on both the reduction in parking, as well as the impacts on the parking generation for the Panera store. So, as Mr. Wasowski mentioned, there are a total of two hundred and seventy-six parking stalls on site. We went out there and we actually did manual counts of those parking stalls during three time periods, and we prepared a parking accumulation study, which was previously submitted, last revised June twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen. On page two of that report, there's a table in approximately the center of the page, which summarizes the maximum parking demand during those three study periods. We studied a weekday lunch period, weekday evening period, a dinner period, and then we also stated a Saturday lunch period. The lunch periods were from eleven AM to two PM on both the weekday and the Saturday, and the evening period was from five PM to seven PM. Now, table one, which is located in approximately the center of the page, provides the, the maximum observed parking occupancy during those three study periods. We broke it out to the, the seventy-six parking stalls provided proximate to the Panera, that's on the left side of the table, and then the overall parking demand for the entire shopping center as a whole on the right side of the table. So you can see the maximum demand, as well as the percent occupancy of the total parking field for both of those areas. You can see that the, the weekday midday and the Saturday midday for the Panera area, as well as the overall shopping center, were relatively consistent. The Panera was eighty-six percent occupied during the weekday midday, and eighty-one percent occupied during the Saturday midday. But if you look at the overall shopping center as a whole in totality, you're at less than fifty percent occupancy during both of those peak times. So, there's definitely an abundance of excess parking as far as the overall development goes. You can see that, specific to the Panera area, there is, you know, that, that occupancy's approaching ninety percent. As Bobby mentioned, with the addition of the drive-through, you're going to reduce some of that parking demand, because currently, anybody that's doing takeout has to park their car, physically go into the store, either order and get their meal, or if they've done order ahead, at least go in and pick up their meal. So they see an approximately a twenty percent reduction in the counter sales, which if you apply the twenty percent reduction to the maximum demand in the Panera area of sixty-six vehicles, you get a projected demand of fifty-three vehicles. As Mr. Wasowski mentioned, in the proposed condition, we're gonna be left with fifty-two stalls in that area, and this is also, I would consider it to be conservative, because as he mentioned, it's not exclusive to Panera, so if you're going to Five Below, which is, you know, adjacent to the Panera, you could still park in this area and go to the Five Below. So, we didn't extract any of those customers from that sixty-six, the maximum demand, so there is a mix... You know, that's a national standard throughout the country as far as shopping center circulation aisles go for two-way operation with ninety-degree parking stalls. So, we don't see any detriment to the ability of vehicles to pull in or out of those parking stalls adjacent to that aisle. And as Mr. Wasowski also mentioned, we can accommodate nine easily within the queue. You could even accommodate a tenth car in that queue. Just given how, and I've worked on hundreds of fast food and drive-through restaurants, you know, once you see queues of that length, the average customer's not going to want to wait in that line. They're going to just park their car and go inside. So, we typically don't see queues, you know, anything beyond nine or ten vehicles regardless of the restaurant operator. So, again, we think that the, it's been designed in a safe and efficient manner. Circulation is adequate to accommodate both trucks and passenger vehicles. Operationally, we feel like it's going to function adequately. And based on the results of the parking study, with the reduction considered as a result of the drive-through addition, we still think that there will be enough parking in this area for the Panera. But certainly, when you look at the center in totality, there's more than fifty percent vacancy during peak times at the center. So, if there was ever a time when this area was at capacity, they certainly have the ability to use the remainder of the lot. And Paul will confirm, they do have pro rights to parking. They're not restricted to parking only in this portion of the development. They do have rights to utilize all the spaces on-site. So, we don't see any issues relative to parking occupancy or there not being sufficient parking to accommodate the proposal. Certainly be happy to answer any question the board has or any of the professionals have, but I didn't have anything additional for direct testimony.
I have one question.
Sure.
I realize that you didn't study other stores' deliveries. Say a delivery for Five Below comes in at noon, and your queue is full. Logistically, does your current design allow for that?
It's, as Mr. Wasowski mentioned, the deliveries are going to circulate behind the building in a counterclockwise manner. So, they're still going to have that twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle to navigate when they exit the rear of the building and gain access back to Route 22. So, even if all the yellow cars depicted on A3 are in fact in that queue, this would remain open for circulation purposes. You know, and as you mentioned, this will be stop-controlled, which would require the delivery vehicle to stop, observe what's going on in front of them before continuing on through that area. So, to answer your question, yes, we think it'll function adequately. Should there be a delivery during, you know, the peak lunchtime?
In terms of, and certainly we understand, you know, just from me listening, you know, obviously that the prime spaces for someone who wants to go to Panera would be obviously in that field where I'm sure as practical basis you see the most difficult-to-finding spaces, although there may be many open throughout. And obviously, there are uses, I guess, and I don't know if you come across the uses, where people could be visiting one of the other locations, they're not kind of independent, where they could be shopping in one of those and kind of walk across. So, you could see some of that. I understand you can't design that or understand how to extract that, but I guess that kind of is how you look at an overall site, I would assume.
It is certainly. Any multi-tenant retail facility, there is a certain percentage of shared parking that goes on between the users. And I think that the location of this parking and the proximity to both Panera and Five Below is what plays into that being the most utilized parking for the development. It's not like, you know, the Panera is a pad site exclusive to itself with nothing surrounding it, and you can extract the Panera parking. You are getting a certain percentage of that Five Below parking in here as well just because of the proximity of the parking to the front door. So, a mix of both, not uncommon for a multi-tenant retail facility.
Sometimes, I don't go to fast food very often, but there's a contingency for, there's like a problem at the window or something where people will pull up and I guess they'll bring the food out to them if there's a problem. Do you have any contingency plan? Because if there's a problem with the order, I can see the whole thing backing up and becoming a real mess.
I would defer to Bobby on that as far as, operationally, if there's a problem with the order, do they typically direct the person at the pickup window to park? They'll bring their order out to them? I'm sure they're, much to what you've experienced, there's something similar.
Yeah, it's few and far between, but we will pull a car through and have them park in a spot. Some cafes have a designated area for this. I don't know if this one does or not. I'm not apt to make that decision. We would, we would at that point pull the car forward so that, you know, the cars behind them would be able to be taken care of quicker. If that makes sense.
To be clear, you're not going to leave the car sitting in that spot in the drive-through? You're going to tell them, please go and park, and then you'll have someone come and deal with it?
The engineer was talking about coming through there and making a K-turn if they went into there. Do you, do you see any hazards to doing that? You think that, how you manipulate through there with cars coming around the turn and...
You know, as Dave mentioned, I think that the likelihood of that happening is going to be few and far between because they know, I mean, this doesn't lead anywhere, and it is one-way circulation behind the building. So, there's no real reason for a patron to come back in this area, to go behind the building because it is one-way. I don't, there is sufficient room to make that maneuver on the odd chance that it were to occur. But given that when you proceed to, adjacent to the existing Panera store and you have clear visibility of the drive-through queue, in my professional opinion, I don't see a lot of people pulling back into this area and then, you know, wanting to K-turn and get out. If by chance they were in the drive-through lane and they decided that they wanted to exit, this is just striping adjacent to the preview board and the order board. So, they would have the ability, and there is sufficient width in here that they could execute a U-turn without having to actually do a K-turn from that area. So, on the odd chance that they're in this five-car queue, they decide that they don't want to wait, you know, or for whatever reason that they want to leave this queue, there's not a barrier curb there. They do actually, it's just striping. So, there is sufficient width here that a vehicle could make a U-turn, in the odd chance that that were to happen.
Yeah, I'm more worried about the people who are, after they make the order, just filling up that line without even thinking about it.
Yeah, and that's...
Trying to figure out a way to, either striping or something, just...
I think a combination of striping, a do not block the box, and then just operationally, you know, telling the patron, please pull ahead, please wait here. You know, I think the combination of those would really reinforce that until this, you know, car at the window is left and this queue moves up, that you're to wait there. So, I think...
There's got to be something...
Likely a combination of those three things, signage, striping, and then an operational. We, I think we can handle that that way, honestly.
When you were doing your parking studies during peak times, how many cars were in that other lot that you're losing compared to the front lot? Was that full?
Right here?
Yeah.
So, if you flip towards the rear of the study, we actually broke out, you can see the Panera parking is designated in the red boxes, and the rest of the retail center is designated in blue.
What page do you want us to see?
It's Figure Two. I'm not sure what page you're...
It's Figure Two, isn't it?
Yeah, there's an area with the letter designations. And then if you go to the two summary tables directly behind Figure Two, you'll see that those letters correspond to the charts. And then the numbers in the chart are the maximum number of parked vehicles in that ten-minute interval. So, you're referring to sections L, M, and N.
Correct.
And then if you go through, you can see of the supply in L during the weekday midday during the lunchtime, there's twelve stalls available. There were eight at a max. In M, there were eleven available, and there are eight max. And then N, which is the one directly adjacent to the door, there are twelve stalls available. And we did actually see those twelve stalls filled at various times through the study period. So, those areas directly, you know, specifically N, which is directly adjacent to the door, we did see those parked at capacity during lunchtime.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for this witness?
Chair, just got another question. In your report, you identify the sixty-six feet parking spaces, you know, midday. And you identify that, you know, if you need to park elsewhere, take out the park, or you need to park it, park it towards the lot. I see on your Figure Two, there's parking areas E and H are probably the first parking areas next to Hobby Lobby. Would the closest parking spots to Hobby Lobby be filled at that time? How far of a distance is it for a person to go to walk once they park by the Hobby Lobby to get per side and then from per side over to the Panera?
I think that G and K would probably be the two closest areas to the Panera. And if you look at, G was, had a maximum occupancy of seventy-three percent. So, there was still twenty-seven percent vacancy during the lunchtime. And K actually was at forty-four percent. So, it had sixty-six, or fifty-six, sorry, percent vacancy during lunchtime. Distance-wise, I would have to measure that, but...
So, a lot of the spots in K are the...
ADA?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The whole first, the whole front side of K is ADA?
You know, I'd be happy to make that measurement. You know, I wouldn't, it's not atypical for a multi-tenant retail facility to, you know, park in an area, walk along the front facade of the building to get to a restaurant if need be. Again, it's, I think it's a little bit different when it's a multi-tenant facility and they're all in one building versus if it was a pad site and you had to park, you know, away from a pad site, walk through a parking lot to get to it. I think that's a little bit different. You know, customers are more used to parking, walking through the aisle, walking along the front facade to enter the facility.
I just couldn't put scale. It seems like it's probably three hundred feet or so, maybe even a little bit longer.
I'd be certainly happy to verify that if you'd like. I mean, again, I just, you know, I think that...
Do you think that's reasonable? I guess if I'm getting anything, that's reasonable, just some of the wall.
Yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable on a retail setting.
It's just, the only, I don't know how many ADA spots are over on your side. If you say there's nine or eleven ADA spots currently, most of them are over on that front, that K-wall.
Yeah.
Okay. So, is that enough in front of the restaurant? Is that enough?
I missed that, sorry.
So, there's nine ADA spots in the parking lot, seven over by Hobby Lobby, two by the restaurant. I don't know ADA rules.
Well, the ADA rules, you need more than nine for that number of parking spaces.
Okay, that's fine, but within distance, what is the distance? I don't know what...
That is a specified distance.
All right, so I, okay, I didn't know if there was or not.
Well, it basically states that you have to be close to us, closest to us as possible to the front door, which is a sensible requirement.
There are, there are actually three existing ADA stalls right adjacent to the front of the Panera.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just, yeah, on the left there, most sides of the entranceway, that's where the ADA spots.
Correct.
Anybody else have questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chase. My last witness is John McDonough, a professional planner.
Mr. McDonough, I'll swear again. You swear a testimony you're about to give and any evidence you present to the board is the truth and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name, and then give your work affiliation.
Sure. My name is John McDonough, that's spelt M.C., capital D.O.N., O.U.G.H. I am the project planner. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a certified, which is a national certification. I am also a licensed landscape architect, but I'm here in the capacity of professional planner. I do this on a nightly basis. I've been accepted by boards throughout the state, and I've been accepted before this board before.
We would ask that he be so qualified as a professional planner.
Your license is active, right?
Current in good standing, yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, as for the last two witnesses, if you can give then board members an overview from the specific overview of the planner specifically related to the standards needed as this issue stands and touching on the other, assuming C-variants, starting with an overview and then your conclusions.
Sure. So, we're here in the HC Highway Commercial District. We're dealing with a restaurant use that actually has a drive-through component. And as Mr. Michael has pointed out in the report, that constitutes a use variance. It's not expressly listed as a prohibited use in your list of prohibited uses, but if you default back to your definition of a restaurant, it does say that a restaurant with a drive-through component, I think the actual language says drive-in component, is a prohibited use throughout, throughout the municipality. So, that said, the applicant is here asking the board for use variance. I've run the application through the four elements of the familiar Medici test. I'll take the board through each one. But the first thing I'd like to do is just, with the chair's permission, is move into evidence some exhibits that I've prepared, essentially to show neighborhood compatibility. We know that that is a key aspect of any variance application, and I think these exhibits will show the board and give the board some comfort with respect to neighborhood compatibility.
We're up to A5.
All right, I'll pass these out. Why don't you describe, why don't you describe what they are? We'll mark them as A5, and then I'll pass them out.
So, A5 is going to be a five-part exhibit, five pages, file size eleven by seventeen. It's really just a series of maps, just to take you up what I would call the...
Well, i- i- it basically states that you have to be close to us, closest to us as possible to the front, which is a sensible requirement.
Okay.
There are, there are actually three existing ADA stalls right adjacent to the, the front of the Panera.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, on the left there. Both sides of the entranceway, that's where the ADA spots.
Correct.
Anybody else have questions for this witness? Anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chase. My, my last witness is John McDonough, professional planner.
Mr. McDonough, I'll swear you in. You swear a testimony you're about to give and any evidence you presented to the board is the truth and nothing about the truth help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, spelling your last name, and then give your work affiliation.
Sure. My name is John McDonough. That's spelt M-C, capital D-O-N-O-U-G-H. I am the project planner. I'm a licensed professional planner here in the state of New Jersey. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a certified, which is a national certification. I am also a licensed landscape architect, but I'm here in the capacity of professional planner. I do this on a nightly basis. I've been accepted by boards throughout the state, and I've been accepted before this board before.
We would ask that he be so qualified as a professional planner.
Your license is active, bro?
Current in good standing, yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, as for the last two witnesses, if you can give then board members an overview from the specific overview of the planner specifically related to the standards needed as this issue stands and touching on the other subsequent C-variants, starting with an overview and then your conclusion.
Sure. So, we're here in the HC Highway Commercial District. We're dealing with a restaurant use that actually has a drive-through component, and as Mr. Michael has pointed out in the report, that constitutes a use variance. It's not expressly listed as a prohibited use in your list of prohibited uses, but if you default back to your definition of a restaurant, it does say that a restaurant with a drive-through component, I think the actual language says drive-in component, is a prohibited use throughout, throughout the municipality. So, that said, the applicant is here asking the board for, for use variance. I've run the application through the four elements of the familiar Medici test. I'll take the board through each one. But the first thing I'd like to do is just, with the chair's permission, is move into evidence some exhibits that I've prepared, essentially to show neighborhood compatibility. We know that that is a key aspect of any variance application, and I think these exhibits will show the board and, and give the board some comfort with respect to neighborhood compatibility.
We're up to A5.
All right, well, I'll pass these out. Why don't you describe, why don't you describe what they are? We'll mark them as A5, and then I'll pass them out.
So, A5 is going to be a five-part exhibit, five pages, file size 11 by 17. It's really just a series of maps, just to take you up what I would call the layers of planning. We're going to start with a tax map. I know you've seen this on the basic plan, but it'll just highlight the salient points and then just work up to the, to the zoning and the, and the reason why we're here.
Just right.
No, that's all. Go, go.
Okay. So, first page just shows the subject property outlined in yellow with its frontage on Route 22, a familiar piece of property. You've heard the details of the developed condition of the property. Generous lot area, developed as a shopping center, essentially in an area that is non-residential in character. You do have some residents behind the subject development, but distant from the subject site. Flipping over to page number two, we now simply show the developed condition of the property from an aerial perspective. Site suitability is a key aspect of any variance application, and what's nice about this is the applicant is putting the drive-through component in what I'll call the appendage parking lot. This is not in the core parking lot, the main parking lot in the front of the building, but that side parking lot that you see in this particular photograph. We are dealing with an end cap unit here, which lends itself well to the drive-through use. That's where we typically see them, in a shopping center or in a pad site within a shopping center as well. So, again, in terms of site suitability, the fact that we're dealing with an end cap and a parking area that is set to the side, away from the mainstream of parking, we think adds to the site suitability aspect of the test. Again, we do have residential development to the back of the subject property, and if we use north to the left in this particular photograph, the residential development would be to the right or to the south. We see townhouses, and we put a scale on there. It just gives you a sense of that nearest unit, as our engineer had said, is well over 400 feet away, blocked by the mass of the building itself. And the utility areas of the shopping center are much closer than the, the drive-through component that's being proposed here. Otherwise, we're in a entirely non-residential setting. We've got a lot of big box retail happening there. This is your highway commercial zone. This is not the general commercial zone. This is not the downtown zone. It is somewhat of an auto-centric zone in comparison to some of your, I'll say, more walkable zoning districts. This is an auto-centric use, and again, in terms of site suitability and blending well with the zone plan, we think this is an appropriate location for that drive-through amenity. Third page simply shows what we've said in terms of the neighborhood character. Everything you see in red represents non-residential development. The gold that you see in the lower right-hand corner is the residential development that, again, is remote from the subject property. Fourth page shows the reason why we're here. We are in the HC Highway Commercial District. It is, as I read your ordinance, the most permissive of your commercial zones. Again, this is not the downtown or the general commercial district. And highway commercial is inherent to the name of the zone itself, so it does invite automobiles into the zone, and subject property, again, is developed in accordance with that HC Highway Commercial use parameters. The five, uh, sorry, the four photographs on the last page just give a sense of the physical characteristic of the property. In the first frame in the upper left, you see the developed condition and the four units, I'm sorry, the three units that are there. You've got Hobby Lobby, you've got five below, and then the end cap all the way to the left would be the Panera component. Basically, what you see in frame number one is what you get. No, no change to that parking field as part of this development proposal. Frame number two in the upper right-hand portion shows the end cap, and the emphasis here is that we do have signage on the building now. The applicant is asking for relief for the relatively modest signs, the eight-square-foot signs that will announce the drive-through amenity and provide a navigation aid. But overall, in terms of the, the entire sign package that's associated with the Panera component, we are at 50 percent of what the overall sign budget would be in terms of the maximum allowance associated with this facility. Frame number three just takes us into that parking area that's going to be converted for this drive-through component. You can see on the left-hand side where that addition of 384 feet would be introduced to provide for that pass through window and the, the drive-through pickup point. And then in closer up in frame number four, we do show the access point and the same side of the building and the fact that we have a sign there now, which will be augmented with another drive-through sign and just simply announce from this vantage point that amenity that's being added on to the use that's already there. With that background, we think this provides substantial evidence coupled with the evidence that the applicant's previous witnesses has, have provided to meet the elements of proof that would go towards the Medici test. There are four aspects of proof, essentially if we boil down Medici. First part looks at special reasons and the purposes of zoning that are advanced. We see multiple purposes advanced here, including Purpose A, the promotion of a general welfare. This is going to enhance and establish business with a commitment to your community. You've heard about the operational efficiencies. It's going to add to the viability of the business itself. Additionally, this is going to benefit the public at large. It does benefit people who have mobility challenges, people with young children, people who may be handicapped, the elderly. Again, we know the overall intent of zoning is to get people out of their cars, but we think this is a special circumstance that warrants keeping people in their cars and enhancing the efficiencies, particularly for those people that I had just mentioned. It also does provide a convenience and a time-saving efficiency for those who may have a small order, order and are on the go. This is a cafe with coffee use and the like, so again, this caters to that component. Additionally, we would find that the advancement of Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, is met here as well. It's an attractive building. It's an attractive development. It is not going to change. One of the reasons that we don't want to see drive-through components introduced is that they do provide, let's say, an eyesore at the front of a building. This is being provided at the side of the building. It's not going to draw attention up close and get, again, in the public eye, it's going to be those storefronts that are now maintained there. Additionally, we would see the advancement of Purpose E, which is the plant, I'm sorry, Purpose M, the planning goal defined for efficient use of land. This is an adaptive reuse of an existing building. And then finally, the advancement of Purpose G, which is the planning goal to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations for the reasons that I set forth. The location is appropriated that it blends well with the site, blends well with the overall zone. Terms of the second part of Medici, we look at site suitability, and I think the, the evidence that we've put forth here and the testimony of the engineers before me, that this portion of the property lends itself very well to the use that's being introduced. Again, it is that side parking lot. That adds to the suitability of the site. It is also appropriate by virtue of its context, being relatively sunken relative to its neighbors, so there is adequate separation there. There's going to be some buffering introduced as well. And as I said, towards site suitability, we're dealing with an end cap unit here. Third part of the test takes those benefits, those public benefits, and now looks at the public impacts. Again, I'll fall back here on the testimony of the witnesses that have gone before me, that the design as proposed will function safely and efficiently. I think there's been a good interaction with the board and the applicant and the applicant's witnesses here to mitigate some of the concerns about the queuing and about the interaction with the center aisle and the blocking of the center aisle as, as orders are being processed. So, again, I think the impacts have been mitigated to address the board's concerns. This is going to not produce substantial sound or glare, traffic generation, as you've heard, impede the circulation, or negatively impact the visual quality of the site itself. This is not going to be an overnight use. My notes say that the drive-through is going to close at 10 and open at 6, except on Sunday, it's going to pinch an hour earlier on both ends, closing at 9 and opening at 7. Also, in terms of neighborhood impact, just again, falling back on the visual that I've provided, that the nearest home is well over 400 feet away. Predominantly a highway-oriented, non-residential setting. With that, the last part of the test focuses on the zone plan intent. It's always a question of whether it will substantially undermine the integrity of your zone plan ordinance. We know this is a blanket prohibition in the community, but we think the board can find here that this relief relates very well to a specific piece of property. It is certainly not going to violate the planning goals of maintaining walkability, having a negative visual impact. And again, pulling any use here, that is, is not desirable, certainly in the context of the downtown, where it would break up a street wall effect. That's not something we're dealing with here, and also in the general commercial district as well. So, in terms of the master plan, we're looking at a site that I would offer is custom-ready for the use that's before you, and I think the board can move favorably on this relief to the extent that it does relate to a specific piece of property and not the zone district as a whole. That highway commercial district, that zone district only relates to a 1.25-mile section of your town where Route 22 runs through. We're not condoning this elsewhere in the community, and so we think the board can put a nice rope around this variance where it would not, again, create a ripple effect elsewhere in the community. With that, I believe the use variance aspect, which is the main variance that the applicant is seeking here, has met the burden under the law. With respect to the signs, that's reconcilable under the C2 balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as a whole outweigh the detriments. Clear and safe identification of the site, providing for a navigation aid to let someone know that that drive-through component is there, and then no substantially negative detriment on the other side, given the fact that our, we are well below the sign budget for this particular site. I don't know if we've actually eliminated the parking variance here. I think we have some testimony that-
We've minimized it.
So, there, there's testimony on the record that if we take the actual patron area, we would comply. If we take the seat count, we would comply. But again, falling on the actual relief based on the total square footage of the Panera building, 52 spaces being provided, 82 required. We believe the applicant has met its burden with the testimony of the two experts that have gone before me, that the actual supply will meet the actual demand in this instance based on comparison with not only the actual site itself, but other, other sites as well. I personally have been involved with, with other Paneras, so we have seen this drive-through component work very well in, in other centers and other facilities as well. And with that, we see a benefit in terms of the C2 balancing test being met. Paul said, this is a very straightforward application in the context of this particular site. We believe the applicant has met its burden under the law for both the D relief and the C relief, and the board can move favorably on the belief being sought.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness?
I have a question about, you said you represented Panera on other, have you ever dealt with this specific style of drive-through?
I was actually thinking about it. I've been involved with Panera with Paul since 2010, 2011. We've done a number of these in shopping centers, and the truth is, they come in all shapes and sizes in terms of the, the parking circulation. I was rapidly trying to flip through some of the others that I've done. I know we did one up in Mount Olive that was approved, but I don't know, and I don't believe that was a wraparound.
Right. And, and I believe the, the answer from Mr. Cole was that there, there are some that have this, this kind of configuration. I don't believe, I can't recall, I was doing the same thing. I can't recall this exact configuration, but, you know, for example, we worked in Edison and we worked in a couple of other locations, and, and each of the configurations are different because it is unique to a specific site. But can we put our finger on exactly this scenario? Although it exists within the Panera chain, you know, we can't in terms of us personally.
Just one, you may have touched upon this, but maybe you can go into a little bit deeper. Can, can you reconcile the ordinance's provision for drive-through restaurants with granting of it in this location?
Sure. So, in, in terms of the Medici reconciliation, again, this is a wholesale prohibition throughout the entirety of the community. We're looking, again, not condoning the use throughout the entirety of the community, but really drilling down to the attributes of this particular piece of property, the end user that's there now and the use that's there now, the physical characteristic of the property, and the fact that we do have this, I'll call it double-loaded aisle that has parking on both sides, which has adequate width to accommodate this particular configuration. So, in terms of the reconciliation of the omission of the use from a planning standpoint, I believe that the board can find with respect to the particular attributes of this property, the intent of the zone plan and ordinance will not be substantially undermined or improved.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I have.
So, we need some clarification on some of the things that we discussed earlier.
Yes. What, what we will do is, there, there were a number of obviously questions and comments relating to getting some more specific information on delivery times from other tenants, coordinating, diving down a little deeper with, with the landlord to make sure that we have that geared up and we can present that.
I would like you to come back with some more ideas on-
Absolutely. That was, yes.
The striping or the, the way you can stop the flow, so if, if there is somebody coming through, they're not going to be blocked.
Exactly. And that, that was my next thing is that the other main-
On both, on both sides.
Right. And that was the main, the other thing is that we've talked about crosshatching, don't block the box, and other concepts. So, we're definitely going to reevaluate that and come back with what we consider to be a, a specific proposal that we think would, can meet those concerns. So, we, we will do that and then, and continue.
And on the ADA spaces, the amount that-
Yes.
We have conflicting.
Right. There seems to be a little bit of a, of a clarification that needs to be in-
Do you think you can work that out?
Yeah. We will do that and make sure and incorporate if we think it needs to incorporate some more in the specific vicinity of the Panera, then we'll do that as well.
Well, it sounds like we're short in the lot as it is now, so.
Right. No, no, that's what I'm saying, to get the number down and make sure that, as we all agree, that is something that simply just has to be met. It's not a question of-
Because that's not a practice not conforming, that's something that the government requires.
Right. No, that's what I'm saying. There's no leeway on that. It was a matter of just kind of making sure we have the right number. Yeah. And so, we will do that and come back.
The next meeting's October 16.
Okay.
Sam is correct, October 16?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
And I, I don't know, do we have to, did we open for the public any question, even though there's no one here?
I, I'll do that.
For, for, for this witness as well, yes.
Does anybody else have any questions for this witness? Does anybody in the public have any questions for this witness? Thank you.
And, and in terms of, we, we do have a transcript here to help. I don't know if there'll be someone who wants to or how, I guess we can talk about someone reading it so that there's a full board, I mean, we can, you know, that's, I, we specifically did this, right, so that we can, we can have that expense so that we have best and easiest for you to do your job.
Yeah, we have a requirement that if you order a transcript, that you, as a courtesy, it's required to provide us with the copy as well, and we'll have any of our members who are available to read it, and then they'd be eligible to vote.
Terrific. And that, that was, of course, what the intention was, so, thank you.
Great, great.
Thank you very much.
How soon do you think we can get the transcript?
That, I will speak to her afterwards, and then I can send Mr. Loughlin an email on that. And did we announce so we know, I know you said it, but if you could say it clear, even though there's no one here, let's just do it anyway.
Right. So, this application will be continued on the October 16th regular meeting, and there'll be no need for further notice.
Thank you. And any extension if it's needed, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you do.
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not wrong.
Hmm?
You're still on, so.
We're just talking transcript.
Oh, yeah. We're paying the traffic today.
No, we keep, like, the, the, what? Oh. Oh. You can't do it before 8:00 in the morning when you get off?
I don't think we made that in the park.
Yeah. Yeah, we just have to worry.
Hopefully they do.
You can't do it before 10:00 in the morning when you get off?
I don't think we made that in the park.
Yeah. Yeah, we just have to worry.
Hopefully they do.
Sam, are we still on?
Oh, I know. That adds a lot.